Yeah. Hi Jessica, I do see you there. Thank you so much. I called to order the Tuesday, September 2nd Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. Welcome back, everyone. I hope the council had a great recess and that everyone had a wonderful summer. If you're a parent in the room and you made it to the first week of school, congratulations. You did it. And really glad to see everyone. In the room, we have Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Councilmember Sal Houdin, Council President Kritzser, myself, Councilmember Stewart, and online, we have Council Vice President Forsyth. We have seven items on our agenda as action items to get started with, and then a few after that. So we'll jump right in. We're going to start with our planning department. The first item of business is the acceptance of a Port of Seattle Economic Development Grant in the amount of $120,000 for 2025 and 2026. Introducing this item is Deputy Director Seraphie Allen. Welcome.
Thank you. As Councilmember Stewart said, this agenda item will be presented by Dominique Meeks, our new, or not so new anymore, Small Business Assistance Program Manager. Dominique joined us in February from the City of Seattle, where he worked in the Office of Economic Development for the past six years. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce him briefly on the record. And today, we are seeking council's direction to put the acceptance of the Port of Seattle Economic Development Grant on the September 2nd Consent Agenda. The City of Redmond has been receiving this grant from the Port of Seattle since 2016. And I will turn it over to Dominique to share a little bit more.
Great. Good afternoon, council. My agenda item title is the acceptance of the 2025-2026 Port of Seattle Economic Development Grant for the amount of $120,000. Since 2016, the City of Redmond has received about $60,000 annually from the Port of Seattle to assist economic development programs. For 2025-2026, this grant includes the following items and projects. Number one, the Startup 425 Entrepreneurship Support. Number two, the Downtown Redmond District Development Feasibility Study. And number three, our World Cup 2026 activations. These projects align with strategies outlined in our Economic Development Strategic Plan that was adopted in 2024. And for example, the Startup 425 supports our Strategy 2C. And the BID exploration aligns with our Strategy 6A. And the World Cup activation supports the Strategy of 6C. No additional or new cost to the city will be incurred through this grant. And we are asking for the direction of council on placing this grant acceptance on September 16th to the consent agenda at this time. If there are any questions or comments, if there are any questions or comments that need to be addressed.
Thank you so much for the introduction. And it's great to have you in the room, Dominique. It's already been a pleasure. I've already heard so many small businesses using your name and being in connection, being connected to you. So thank you for being on the team and joining the city. Does anyone on the council have any questions about this item that is slated for the consent agenda on the 16th? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. And yes, thank you. Welcome, Dominique. I am very excited just from how our circles have crossed over before in Seattle and now here. So I'm quite excited to have you onboard with the city. I had a question. Since this partnership has been in place for quite some time, for upwards of almost a decade now, we do have an exceptional year ahead with World Cup coming. We did mention that funds will be going here. However, I just wanted to verify that the amount of funds is still the same. So it's still continuance of the 60,000 annually, despite that we're anticipating a different allocation of our spend and how we're using it. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Council President Kritzser.
I'll just say, I'm really excited about all the things that are included in this grant, especially the Football for All programming and some of the things that are coming with the World Cup programming. I definitely commend you on all the creativity that's going into that and looking forward to using this grant to make our community even more vibrant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any objections to this item going to consent on September 16th? Okay, seeing none, we will send it there. Thank you so much, really appreciate it. Let the record show, we've been joined by Councilmember Anderson. Welcome. The next item on the agenda is approval to accept the Simple Possession Advocacy Representation Grant. Introducing this item will be Deputy Director Seraphie Allen. And we're also joined by Brooke Buckingham. Welcome.
Thank you. And this is quite a short item, so I'm just going to hand it over to Brooke.
Good afternoon. Just to let council know, in June, we applied for the SPAR grant. And this was an opportunity offered by the State Office of Public Defense to help kind of offset some costs related to public defense. We were notified in July that we received a grant of $6,000. The SPAR grant is very limited in what we can use it for, but it pretty much reimburses city for expenses related to drug charges or possession of drugs. So we will be able to review those cases that meet the eligibility requirement and submit the reimbursement to the state. And we're asking that this grant be accepted by council on the consent board September 16th.
Thank you so much, really appreciate the summary. And this is really timely, since we also recently have the impacts of the new state standards related to public defense. Are there any questions or comments on this item from the council? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. More of a curiosity question for this, because of course, every dollar absolutely counts and it's wonderful that we can get it. Since it covers reimbursement of up to $6,000, what is our annual cost?
So we typically have cases around $17,000 last year that would have met this threshold. So it's a small amount. They were definitely oversubscribed. And I think essentially, you'd be, essentially, they awarded cities that applied about half of what they requested.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th? Seeing none, we will have this back then. Thank you so much, really appreciate it, Brooke. Item number three on our agenda is the acceptance of the King County Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy Grant. Sticking with us is Deputy Director Allen, Brooke Buckingham, and we're also joined by Teesa Rutherford. Welcome.
And just to make this one confusing, it's also $6,000, as you heard. But we'll let Teesa give some more detail.
Thank you, nice to see you, council. In July, the City of Redmond Human Services Department was awarded $6,000 from the 2025 One Time King County VSHL, which stands for Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy Grant, to support case management and services for individuals experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity. This funding will allow the Homeless Outreach Program to expand our flex funding to support low-income clients with necessities that local charity organizations might not cover or where there are limited resources. Specifically, these grant funds will be used to help with car repair costs and move-in assistance fees. We are asking council today to approve this grant award in order to accept these funds. We're proposing to place this on the September 16th Consent Agenda.
Thank you, appreciate that. Are there questions about this item from the council? Councilmember Fields.
So similar to Councilmember Nueva Camina's questions on the other grants, except in this case, it really does seem small. And this is, these are, this is a huge issue, right? And so is there any history or any extrapolation of history that this could increase in the future? Or are there other similar grants that come out of the county or even the state that...
I can't answer that. One thing I can say about this specific grant is I don't believe you can be awarded more than once. And I don't know if there's a timeframe on that, but they prioritize new applicants. And this is specific, it's a specific allocation through Councilmember Perry's office. But our flex fund currently is about $10,000 a year, and that's what we budget. We're obviously very conservative about kind of really exploring all options before we allocate the city's flex funding. But I would say historically, we've been within budget. So this particular fund, car repair, has not been something that we typically really can add up and that could eat up a lot of our flex funds. So this was really a great opportunity for, to kind of help clients that are maybe unemployed and seeking, you know, going to their job interview and needing some car repairs or something like that. So the 6,000 really will help create a cushion and allow us a little bit more flexibility in how we use that funding source.
Okay, yeah. And as said earlier, every dollar matters, but this is an issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the council on this item? Any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th? Seeing none, we will have this one back. I really appreciate it. Thank you all. We'll now switch to our public works items. The first, I'll speak slowly to allow a transition here, is to approve the Interlocal Agreement for Washington Conservation Corps 2025-2026 with the Washington State Department of Ecology. Introducing this item is going to be Deputy Director Chris Stinger. Welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. As introduced, Chris Stinger, Deputy Director of Public Works, Utilities, and Environmental Programs. Joining me online today is Senior Environmental Scientist Tom Hardy. So today, we are presenting an interlocal agreement between the City of Redmond and the Washington State Department of Ecology for participation in the Washington Conservation Corps WCC program for the 2025-2026 service year, which corresponds with the fiscal year and federal government starts on October 1st, ends on the 30th of September. The WCC plays a critical role in maintaining approximately 100 acres of stream and habitat restoration sites throughout Redmond, work that is essential for meeting permit requirements such as your shoreline permits or your stormwater permits, and ensuring long-term success for our capital improvement projects. This agreement supports a six-member crew for 42 weeks, who will focus on invasive weed management, native planting, litter removal, and other restoration efforts. Additionally, this year's agreement includes four extra weeks of crew time to assist with large-scale noxious weed removal and tree planting. The work not only maintains compliance, but it also enhances site aesthetics, community value, and ecological health. Total cost of the agreement is $289,380, funded through the approved Stormwater Operations Budget. So we're seeking to add this to the consent agenda on September 16th and stand by for any further questions.
Thank you so much, Deputy Director, really appreciate that. Having recently seen one of the crews out in the wild, I also want to just acknowledge what great work they do as public educators about the work that they are doing. I saw a lot of engagement going on, just from the public being curious about what the task was that day and what was being done on the project. And they were just really great ambassadors for their work also. Council, are there questions on this agreement? Council President Kritzser.
Well, I'll start by saying, I think every time this comes to us, that I'm always really excited to vote for it and to make sure that, I think, not only do we get a great deal in terms of having such really talented folks come and do this really important work for all the restoration work we have around our city, but also in terms of giving some training and getting some, you know, some of these first jobs in environmental stewardship and restoration and people that may follow those careers the rest of their lives. So it's cool our city can be a part of that as well, and just appreciate those who participate. I know this is a program of AmeriCorps, so I'm curious if you can kind of speak to how any changes with AmeriCorps might have influenced WCC or like the rates that we're paying.
So currently on the rates, I know the funding was pulled with AmeriCorps, but luckily, we budgeted this year. Part of, you know, if we did run into anything in the future, there's potential efforts that we can pull from tree planting budgets from our environmental programs for that. But it did, there has been a, you know, a change in the funding. And Tom, do you have any other, other information that I didn't provide?
Yeah. So actually, I just heard from Department of Ecology about an hour ago that they, they did receive an AmeriCorps grant for this year. So that was news to us. We, because of what's going on in the federal government, we thought that maybe there was, there wasn't going to be, be any support from the AmeriCorps program this year. But we actually will be receiving some subsidy from AmeriCorps this year.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you for the question. Councilmember Fields.
Do you have any details about what the techniques used for noxious weed management are? And does it include spraying and spraying of which herbicide? Or whatever it is we're using?
I'll defer to Tom on the actual techniques on there, but for the particulars on if there is any spraying or herbicide use.
Yeah, so the crew follows the Integrated Pest Management Program, which prioritizes not using herbicide when it's not necessary. So they'll use hand methods, weed whackers, or digging up, you know, blackberries, blackberry roots, that sort of thing. And then cultural, they call it cultural management, which just means kind of planting densely with native plants. But there are some noxious weeds that we control with herbicides, like poison hemlock and knotweed, especially when there's large patches that are kind of unmanageable for hand methods. And the herbicide they typically use is Amazipir. So I know the council had a request not to use Lysocet several years ago, so we did make that change.
Thank you. And when it is used, is the city staff consulted ahead of time?
Yeah, so the WCC supervisor always checks with myself before applying herbicide. Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on this item? Thanks so much, Tom, for weighing in, we really appreciate it. Any objection to this item going to consent? Seeing none, we'll have this back on the 16th. Thank you, Deputy Director. The next item from Public Works is the approval of an on-call agreement with River Oaks Communication for Consultant Services. Introducing this item is going to be the other Public Works Deputy Director, Vanji Garcia. And I see she's also joined by Paul, welcome.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. Today, we're talking about the River Oaks On-Call Agreement for Technical Assistance with Telecommunications Infrastructure and Franchise Agreements. And I have Paul Cho here, who is our Traffic Operations and Safety Engineering Manager. It's very long to say.
Good evening. Yeah, so we're here to request approval to move this on-call contract to consent agenda. We are asking for this on-call contract to help staff with subject matter expertise in dealing with telecommunication franchise agreements, master permit agreements, and also even dealings with telecommunication infrastructure within city-managed property. So we don't, we don't have that subject matter expertise in-house. And so this on-call agreement would help facilitate quicker responses to technical questions and financial implications. So if you have additional questions, I can answer that as well.
Thank you, appreciate that. Are there questions on this item? Seeing none, Paul, it looks like we'll have this one back on the 16th. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
And the next item is the contract award to Fury Site Works Incorporated of North Bend, Washington, for the Avondale Way Sidewalk Repairs Project. Introducing the item is Deputy Director Garcia. And we are joined by Steve, welcome.
Thank you again, and I am joined here with Steve Gibbs, who is our Capital Projects Manager. And this is the Avondale Way Sidewalk Repairs between 170th Avenue to Union Hill Road.
Good afternoon, council, Steve Gibbs, Capital Projects. We're going to ask the council to award the construction contract of Fury Site Works in the amount just over $965,000 and place this item on consent agenda for the 9/16 meeting. The Avondale Sidewalk Project is, it's going to remove significant ADA barriers. Avondale Way adjacent to the Bear Creek Shopping Center, it's about a total of 1,600 feet, 1,000 feet on the south side, 600 on the north side. As a part of this work, we evaluated 57 trees along this route and determined that seven trees needed to be removed. There's kind of two, two different disruptions from the trees. One is the actual roots getting underneath the, the infrastructure. And it's also the trunk actually getting too big for the, the actual planter strip. And we experienced both of those in, in this case. And so the seven trees are recommended to be removed. And then we'll have significant protections on the, the trees that remain during the work. For the bids, we received 10 bids on this project, which is fantastic. And it came in under our estimate, which is great as well. And then again, we're looking to get this on consent for the 9/16 meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, really appreciate the introduction. Are there any questions on this item from the council? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Welcome. Good to see you, Mr. Gibbs. Question around, because we recently onboarded our wonderful cement crew that we have. I know in my own neighborhood on 166, along the old schoolhouse, has been wonderful as I walk back and forth to Transit Center, to Light Rail Station quite often. So that's been incredible. Now, since we've got them online, and now we've got this bid for this, can you explain a little bit about like why we would be outsourcing and, and why we're not utilizing our in-house cement crew?
Sure, happy to answer that. So this actual project originally consisted of three segments in downtown. So it was the Avondale Way, it was Cleveland, and 166. And so the concrete crew actually did do the 166 segment and the Cleveland Street segment. If you haven't seen it, they did fantastic work. Highly recommend going and trying it out. But, so we did feed them quite a bit of work with those two segments on this.
I think originally, the question is, they started off a CIP project before we had the concrete crew.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th? Seeing none, we will have this back. Thanks so much. I looked at the maps on this one. It's really exciting to have that connection for pedestrians. It's going to create a much more comfortable experience for everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item, an exciting one. Item number seven is to award the Progressive Design-Bill Contract to Lease Crutcher Lewis Washington LLC of Seattle, Washington, for the Maintenance and Operations Center Campus Redevelopment Project. Introducing the item, Deputy Director Garcia, take it away.
Joining Steve and I, we have Amy Kim and Eric Dawson to answer any questions, because as we know, this is using the progressive design build process. So we thought we'd answer any questions before we start this great, long process. But it's a new process for the city, for this new project and contract.
Anything else?
Okay. So just a quick reminder, we did do a staff report and visited you in July 15th. We talked about the progressive design bill process in general and where we were in that process. We presented some milestones. So this is just meeting one of those milestones, coming back to you to request that we move this agenda to the consent agenda. The design bill team will work through validation, design, and construction in phases. So our request is to award the full contract, but award about $5.5 million, which is for that validation, which is that first phase. Happy to take more questions.
All right, I'll open it up. I'm sure there's going to be a few. Questions from the council? Okay, I'll go ahead and kick us off then. So again, as was stated, and just to reiterate for the listening public, yes, this is a different process. We studied the process, and now the process is really beginning. It looks like you had a healthy number of applicant teams before this one was chosen. We also had a significant number of bids on the last project, half of which came in under the engineer's estimate. So I'd like to hear a little bit about the, what is the environment, the bidding environment a little bit right now? And also specifically for this project, how was the experience in recruiting applicants?
We had, we had 10 teams, very strong teams, that were very well-known within the region, have worked on a progressive design build project. And we also requested that they have experience working on an MOC-type project, too. So that's pretty, that's a great number to see 10 teams come through and say that they've worked on MOC-type project, as well as many progressive design build project. We did have an owner's consultant that helped to advertise this, so we made sure that we kind of announced that this project is coming. And so that was one of the strategies, I think, that was really successful in getting some successful teams to bid on it.
Wonderful. And just one more question, would you like to tell us a little bit about the team that was chosen?
And so we've, we've certainly kind of got the upper end of the scale with Lease Crutcher Lewis and with Miller Hole, which is the architect that's partnered with them. And then they also have StanTech, which is kind of their, their MOC expert. Lease Crutcher Lewis is one of the biggest players in the contracting industry, and they are also one of the biggest players in progressive design build. And it was important for us that we brought in experience on that, because this is our first. We learned a little bit on the community center that there's a lot that we don't know yet, and we need a partner that's willing to help us negotiate what we don't know. So OAC, our owners' reps, certainly gives a lot of that experience. And that's their primary job, is to kind of walk us through the process. But Lease Crutcher Lewis also brings a lot of that. Miller Hole did participate in the, or they authored the master plan. So I guess to an extent, you could say they were the incumbent coming in. I'll say they did not rest on their laurels and just coast in on this. They aggressively pursued this project, they gave a great presentation. Our interviews with them were outstanding. And then StanTech, as the MOC representative or expert, they literally have hundreds of these types of projects around the country. There's not many that bring more MOCs. So that, that pretty unique, strong combination made for this, for a really tough team to beat. And they, they did what they needed to do and came out on top by, by a fair margin.
Can I add a little bit? I think they're underlying that the process for this was that we had a secondary process of finalists. Three teams were the finalists. So they were basically paired with the designer and the contractor. And it was very tough. I mean, they came, they had to give a presentation and act like that was the presentation. They walked the site. And then the second day was acting as if how they were leading a meeting with all of us. So they really gave us a lot to think about. And so we had a really tough time, but we went with the skill set of who was in the team that presented to us and what they brought to us, of how they were, the thought process and how they presented to us. So it was a really long couple of days, but we're really feel good about who we chose with the team.
Well, thank you. Let's see if we shook loose a couple of other questions. Councilmember Fields.
So can we talk about these three phases just a bit? So the validation phase, what, what major sets of information and decisions will, will result when you're done with the validation phase? And will you be coming to council to say, here's what we learned? We're on track, we're not on track, we're going to need another $700 million or whatever? So when you, when you complete the validation phase, what, where, what would be our status from a, mostly from our perspective, from a council perspective?
So I'll, I'll start off, and Amy, if you want to add something, feel free. So the, the end result of the, the basic question we're asking in the validation is we've got this master plan, we've got a budget. Are we realistic? Are we in line with what? We've got a budget. Are we realistic? Are we in line with what's currently there? And what the design build team offers us that we haven't previously had is that, that full contractor participation is, can we do this? And are we doing this the right way? Are they going to come in and can they say, you know what, if you shift this building here, those, we'll answer those kind of questions? So we will end up at the end of the validation with a much more realistic, tested, planning-level plan, I guess. So it's going to be more than we typically get when we start a design in earnest, you know, when we're at 0% design. We'll be further down the road here. We'll actually have a validation report. We do plan to come back to Council on a regular basis and update you. So there's not a specific milestone that we'll necessarily be coming back to at validation. But we do, shortly after validation is over, we'll be coming back to you with the design phase. And you will approve the funding for that.
And that's expected in what timeframe?
Early second quarter of next year.
Okay. And then one last question. What is pre-construction? I mean, pre-construction and design. I get design. But pre-construction, are we in a similar way where we did the senior center? We're doing things in advance to save money? Is this, is that what that, what, what does that mean?
I, I don't know that there's a universally agreed upon definition of pre-construction. For me, pre-construction overlaps with design, or maybe design overlaps with pre-construction. It's, it's a, it's a term that incorporates the contractor into that design, in my mind. Because at this point, the contractor not only can help us take a better look at the materials we're losing, we're using, the availability, help us kind of plan out our bidding schedule, like what's the best way to go out and get subcontractors on this? Two, they can weigh in on constructability issues that there are. So it's, it's just, it's the design phase with more input from the contracting world.
It opens up opportunities potentially.
Absolutely.
Great.
And it gives us a reality check.
Perfect.
There are times when we as designers make certain assumptions. This, we now have an opportunity to get somebody that can give us a little more of a yes or no on whether something is a good idea.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council President Kritzer?
More comment than a question, but really appreciate the, both the staff report as well as the study session that we've had on this thus far and the thought that's going into choosing this team. This is maybe the biggest capital project, or at least the biggest one I've seen our city do. I don't know if it's the biggest one we've done, but it's a huge, huge project. So getting the right team on board to help us to make sure that we can do it as effectively as possible, as efficiently as possible is really, really important. So just appreciate the, the work and thought that's going into this first milestone.
Other questions from the Council on the progressive design-build contract, which includes the team that has been selected to be our partners for the next few years? Okay, I'll hop in with one last one. I do have a batch of other questions that actually the Deputy Director has been gracious enough to already schedule time with me offline to make sure I'm able to ask my other questions. But I wanted to, this contract, I really appreciated many of the things that were included in it, including making sure that if at any point we need out, the work product is ours and all of the protections that we talked about previously in this room. There was one piece I wanted to ask more about. The material stated that community outreach activities are underway already, especially in that, in that immediate area. I was just wondering if you could describe a little bit of what that is or what is planned?
We have, we have our communication consultant kind of on board right now. We're talking with our cities' communication team as well. We've just really broadly started to outline what are the different kinds of categories of communication we need to do, which is more public versus which is more internal, which is more on, you know, project status. So we just formulated that spreadsheet right now. I know our master plan identifies some of the stakeholders there, too. So we'll be pulling all that information and start working on a more concrete plan that will lay out. These are the, these are the types of communication and when they're going to start going out as we move forward.
Wonderful. Thank you. Council, are there any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th? Seeing none, we look forward to taking that vote and welcoming our new partners. Thank you, everyone, so much for your work on this the last few months. The next item of business is to help us prepare for a study session on October 28. The item is called Short Term Rental Code Update. Introducing the item is going to be folks from our planning department once more, Deputy Director Sarah Fee Allen, Economic Development Manager Philly Marsh, and Kim Dietz is also joining us. And one additional colleague, whose name I don't know, I'm sorry. Denise, who does business licensing here at the city. Thank you so much for being here with us.
Yes, thank you, Denise, for joining us from the Finance Department. So good afternoon. This is a briefing regarding amendments to the short-term rental regulations and operating standards. The amendments for your review are in preparation for expansion to the short-term rental inventory for World Cup accommodations. This is the first time the city is considering the regulations and operating standards for this business use, which at 237 units comprises approximately 0.6% of Redmond's housing supply. This is the second touch with the City Council as you begin your review of staff's amendments to the Redmond Municipal Code. Your first touch was in June, during which you identified questions to be included in the community and stakeholder involvement. Staff will present a few key highlights today, and we would like to hear your direction regarding a potential study session and any questions or topics you'd like to discuss as a council at that study session. I will now turn it over to Kim Dietz to provide more information about the staff recommendation.
Thank you. And good afternoon, Councilmembers. The recommended amendments that are in your packet are to RMC 5.04, which is General Business Regulations. And they are to provide establishing clarity and consistency with RMC, or RCW, rather, Chapter 64.37, Short Term Rentals, regarding the definition of short-term rentals, to require Redmond business licenses for short-term rentals that meet the state definition, to ensure implementation of consumer safety, transparency, and communication protocols in accordance also with the RMC, and to develop operational standards for ongoing engagement with online platforms, with owners and operators of short-term rentals. And for the Council's consideration, the proposed next steps are the October 28 study session as well as December 2 business meeting for your action. In addition to the previous topics such as definitions, affordable housing, inspections, and enforcement, what additional topics would the Council like staff to prepare for, for your next discussion?
Thank you. Questions from the Council for our study session on the 28th? Council President Kritzer?
Yeah, it seems like there has been quite a bit of feedback gathered. So I think being able to dive into some of the, any of the changes that were made based on some of the feedback that was gathered. I think in particular, I look forward to discussing, there was feedback around the fee for the business license and, and perspectives on, on kind of how we address any of that feedback as well.
Seeing no other hands, I'll hop in with a couple of questions here. I wanted to hear more about the data source that was mentioned in the inventory. Or in terms of identifying the inventory, the source was a labeled AIR DNA. I have a hunch about what that means, but I would like to learn more. And of course, I would be curious to know if in the future, we would consider our own licensing as our system of record in the future. I was a bit confused, so I'd love to hear more on particularly the recommendations around inspections. It wasn't clear to me based on the table whether this was additive or in place of. So I'd love to hear a little bit more about that. And I guess maybe to follow up on the Council President's question, this was actually a hot topic at the Derby Days booth, the Council booth during Derby Days. It seemed that people knew that this, this was coming, this was going on. They, of course, had a lot of those questions and curiosities related to what I would consider the, the good neighbor piece of all of this. And so I think when this is all said and done and implemented, what will it look like in terms of any kind of, you know, we're going to get the, the resident emails about the noise violations or the perceived noise violations and the things like that. So what does service look like to our residents once this licensing is up and running? Are there other questions? Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Curious about the inspections as well and how we would manage to staff that considering we already know that our inspections teams are overburdened. Also interested to hear about liability of completing this versus not completing this. If we as a city do this, what are potential liabilities? If we as a city do not do this, are there any potential liabilities as well? And then additionally interested, if we have any indications of, of those, I think it was 200 and some odd short-term rentals, if we were to implement, if we have an indication, if those would convert to long-term rentals or vice versa? If other short, long-term rentals would conversely convert to short-term rentals? Thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, since World Cup's a regional event, I think any information comparisons to what neighboring jurisdictions are doing would be helpful. So, thank you.
Council President Kritzer?
Yeah, I guess just following up on, on kind of the previous comments in, just curious, when, when you come back to us about your thinking of how this implementation will play out, both during the World Cup time, but then how it will have the longevity that, that makes, that will make it last in the time after that and any potential implications that we've considered? Because, or, or any potential policy changes that we might make to accommodate for the particular time versus what we want as kind of long-term outcomes in our city?
Thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth, is your hand up again?
It is. Thank you.
Yeah.
I will second what Council President Kritzer said. And additionally, Councilmember Fields jogged loose another question for me about World Cup and travel. We're doing this in anticipation for lots of tourism, but we're seeing people not wanting to travel to the US right now. So if we could see some projection data around what we actually think compared to what is, what is actually happening right now with travel to the US? Because it's dramatically different than I think where any of us saw it being even six months ago.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions for the study session on October 28? All right. Thank you so much. Thanks, team. Look forward to the conversation. Our next item in the packet is a read-only item, the 2025 Amendments to the King County Countywide Planning Policies. We have been briefed on these in the past. And since I do represent the city and the Sound Cities Association on the Growth Management Planning Council, I'm happy to take any questions offline if that's helpful. The last item on our agenda is items from other committees. This is a Parks item, and the item is to award Parks signage and wayfinding standards and strategy plan contract to Toolie Design Group LLC in the amount of $99,997. Lindsay Falkenberg, welcome. Please introduce this item.
Hello, Council. Council President Kritzer. My name is Lindsay Falkenberg. I'm the Parks Planning Manager. And I'm here today to share information on the proposed service agreement for the Parks Signage and Wayfinding Standards and Strategy Plan. After a lengthy process, we are with your consent, hoping to contract with Tool Design Group LLC to carry out and complete this project. Tool Design Group LLC have extensive experience in the region and have worked closely with neighboring municipalities. They have a clean but responsive design aesthetic that which, which we think will fit well with Redmond's brand, an effective project management track record, and many solid examples of past work, all of which are included in the bid submittal packet, which has been attached to the memo for you to peruse. If awarded, the project would commence in October and would be targeting, targeting an August 2026 deadline to complete. As a reminder, the hoped-for outcome of this project is to create a comprehensive signage and wayfinding standards guidelines and implementation plan so we can provide more clarity and comprehensiveness to our signage and wayfinding network throughout our park system and to citywide points of interest. In order to create such a plan, Tool Design will conduct a thorough assessment of current and existing signage and wayfinding in Redmond as well as stakeholder engagement to ensure that plan, the plan aligns with the PARCC plan and Redmond 2050. Once the plan is complete, we could begin implementation, and there has been additional money set in reserve for that. The next step would be to bring this item to the business meeting on September 16 for your approval. Any questions at this point?
Thank you, Lindsay. Are there questions or comments from the Council? Councilmember Noeva Kamina?
Thank you. Hi, Lindsay. Thanks for being here. Got a question about the, the timeline on it. I know that one of the reasons why we wanted to implement was to have it be very welcoming so people could find their way around our city in a fairly easy way. And a lot of that is also going to be in anticipation for World Cup. As projects tend to take longer than anticipated, has there been a conversation about it being done, say, before July?
This, the timeline that we're working with is the timeline that Tools scoped for us when they submitted the, the bid submittal. And I think it was really in line with most, we had 22 proposals for this project. It was really aligned with what many of the other consultants also thought this project would take for all that we are asking. I will say that one of the first pieces of the project will be to do a pretty thorough assessment of our signage and wayfinding system in Redmond. And I think, you know, based off what they find coming out of that, we may see some very obvious gaps that we are able to, to fill more quickly in order to prepare for the 2026, you know, the summer of 2026 and the impacts that World Cup will have in the area. And so I think, I think once we have the assessment finished, we'll know a little bit more about what we can kind of accomplish more quickly in order to have that kind of inviting and easily navigable system that we're, we're all hoping for.
Thank you. Because I would have been absolutely remiss if, if we're looking at this timeline and like, okay, this is what we want, how we want to welcome people in and to make it a little bit easier. And if there is any way that it could be so that we're not, everything is beautiful and wonderful and easy to navigate when everybody is leaving.
Right. Yeah, ideally not. So yeah, I think we'll, I think we'll know more once the assessment is finished, where we're kind of at currently and, and what kind of gaps we need to fill.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Thank you. Excited about this as this was a past life career of mine. This is definitely a tight timeline, so seeing us try to get something in by, excuse me, by World Cup is, is, is interesting. I hope we can get there. Very ambitious of us. But my question is more in relation to integrating this work with other regional trail wayfinding strategies that are currently in the works and how those are going to integrate.
Yeah, it's a great question. I actually think that one of the big reasons we went with this design firm is because they have so much experience with other, with, with our regional systems. They worked with King County directly to, to help create the East Rails signage and wayfinding plan. And so they have a pretty intimate knowledge of, of kind of the connectivity of our region. And I think one of the things they spoke well to in both their proposal, but also during the interview, was how they would go about balancing kind of our specific brand and needs within the city of Redmond with the larger region that we're within and, and our desire to be connected to the region. And so I'm excited for the knowledge and skill and relationships that they already have that they'll bring to this project so that we can do that work a little bit more effortlessly and get the stakeholders in the room that need to be there in order to make that connectivity possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, thank you for that response on that question. I, having standards across the region, I think is really important. I was recently in Scotland and different parts of the country had different signs. So it was hard to interpret wherever you were. My question is a little bit maybe a, just a clarification. Your, this contract is for standards and strategies. And there's this discussion about schedule. is for standards and strategies, and there's this discussion about schedule. Is there something in between doing the standards and strategies and implementations, such as an implementation plan? I see the guidelines part of it, but then don't we have to do where we're going to deploy and how we're going to fund it and all of those other things? So is there an implementation plan ahead of us?
Yeah, I think so. I think what comes out of this, and I think part of that is going to be determined by the assessment. You know, what is our current state of being? Is it, is it pretty bad? Or are we doing okay? Or, you know, I think that that will determine a lot of what that kind of final product needs to look like. This was also a conversation we had as we were kind of looking to select a consultant. And I think one of the conversations was, do we need a consultant who's going to go out there and find every single sign and then give us every single thing we need to do? Or do we feel like as, you know, especially within parks operations, do we feel like we're, we would work better with a plan that is kind of general guidelines and standards? We can kind of implement it from there. And I think we're probably looking for something that's kind of in the middle. We do want to know specifically what gaps we have and what we need to fill and what our top priorities are. And we want the plan to be flexible enough that it can be used into the future, once the signs that we are working with have been dealt with, and that can potentially be adopted by other parts of the city to help guide their signage and wayfinding as well, so we can be really cohesive across the cityscape. So I think, I think that it's, yeah, I think that it will be something of an implementation plan, but perhaps not on a level of detail where you've got every single sign going in laid out at this point. But, you know, major gaps identified, top priorities identified, low-hanging fruit identified, and then some really solid standards and guidelines that are flexible, so we can do good decision-making in the future.
Yep. Great, thank you. And I share the enthusiasm for this. I have advocated and, and as a resident, struggled with finding my way, even though I've been here for many, many years. So I appreciate this. Thank you.
Yeah.
Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. And I think it does make sense to have an assessment to see if what we have, how what we have is, is working. I do think there is some cool opportunity, just even from the examples that they used from other cities, to be able to see there are things that, that I, I do hope that will come out with some new ideas of ways that we can make it even easier to get around in our city. We've even seen some of our neighboring cities, especially with light rail, some new signage that's going up that's helping people from getting off the light rail to get to kind of nearby places. Like, I took the light rail to Bellevue, and they had signage that helped direct you to a path to a blueberry farm. That was like a city sign. And I walked to that blueberry farm. It was great. But, you know, that, that type of thing of things that are really cool things within our city that we might be able to uncover, I think, through this project would be exciting. Just to put a fine point on, on the question that Councilmember Fields was asking, so do we, would we, should we anticipate that after this project is done, we likely would see a budget ask for the next biennium to actually develop the signage itself? Or, or would we see a quick implementation of some of the initial recommendations?
It's my understanding that the funding to implement the signage is actually already approved. Yeah. And, and so I think we should be able to move fairly quickly with implementation once we have that plan in place that can help guide us.
Great. I thought that we had approved that, but I wasn't sure if that was in the scope.
Yeah. Yeah, which I think maybe also makes it possible to do some of that gap filling a little bit sooner, maybe, you know, depending on what we find in the assessment. But because the money's already there, I think it will be a little bit easier to jump on the implementation.
Thank you. Well, Lindsay, like I said last week in our planning meeting, I think this is a wildly popular project. There's a ton of demand for this. My question is really about coordination of Team Redmond in this effort. So you are here as a representative of the Parks Department because wayfinding is such a key strategy of the park plan. Wayfinding is also, we've kind of been talking around it. It is a key strategy of our tourism strategic plan in the Community Development and Planning Department as well. Can you share a little bit with the council about how your teams are collaborating? Were you both in the room in selection of this consultant? Could you share a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and our panel that we, the panel that selected this consultant was, included people from across the city. So myself, Cameron Zapata, who is our senior Parks Planner, Michael Hints, who was there representing, representing some transportation interests, Stuart Hargreaves, which, who is on our Parks Trails Recreation Commission, was there as well, so representing kind of that community perspective. And then Jackie Layler from Economic Development and Tourism was there as well, and Darcy Rayner Shepherd from Park Operations. So it was a really big panel. It made it really hard to coordinate, but we did it in the end. And, and we did that intentionally because we did want a lot of different voices getting to weigh in on the consultant that we got in the room. We know that, you know, this is, this is parks-motivated, and we'll speak a lot to the park system and then help direct people to and from those city, you know, special points of interest. And again, we want to make sure that we create something that is usable into the future as Redmond develops its tourism, you know, and, and has more and more points of interest that are inside and outside of parks. We want to be able to have this plan live into that reality. So we're really looking to create something that can kind of grow and evolve with the city.
Fantastic. Thank you for giving us a little bit of insight into how the team is collaborating. Really appreciate that. Are there any final questions from the council on this item? Are there any objections to this item going to consent on the 16th of September? Okay, seeing none, we will have it back. Thank you so much, Lindsay, for being in the hot seat with us. We appreciate you. And that concludes our agenda for today. Seeing no other items, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.